Members of the board are in attendance this evening. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Braswell?
I request that we move 15.01 to 12.02 and then change 16 to 15 and 17 to 16.
Okay, so just because I was still writing the first part. You want to change 17 to 16 and 16 to 17?
No, no. I want to move, delete 15.
Got it. Okay.
And move that to 12.02 and then correspondently change 16 to 15 and 17 to 16.
Got it. So we had an amendment to the motion. Someone want to second Mr. Braswell's motion?
Can I second since I seconded the other one?
I don't think she can second. She seconded the original motion. She can't second the amendment to the motion. Someone else would have to second. Okay, there is no second to the amendment to the motion. So any further discussion? Okay, so to approve the agenda as distributed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 6-1. Onto closed meeting. Be it resolved that this board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Blaine. Second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are now in closed session. Second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are now in open session. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Move to certify.
Motion to certify by Mr. Braswell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Meyer. Any discussion? Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twigg, aye.
Wayne, aye.
Gramp, aye. Motion carries 7-0. Items from closed meeting. Dr. Martin?
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, resignations, and retirement as presented in closed meeting and prohibited by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer. Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0 to approve the items from the closed meeting. That brings us to item number 5.01. We are now in recess until 6:30. Second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now returning to open session. Could I remind everybody to silence your cellphones this evening? And Mrs. Phelps, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
We have no public hearing this evening. Move on to the consent agenda. It includes the approval of minutes, approval of donations, approval of federal grant applications, and the approval of Head Start grant funds. Any motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
For discussion, Dr. Martin, would you like to inform us on the consent agenda?
You introduced several of the items there and I've just detailed the ones that are listed. On the consent agenda are the minutes of the June 11th, 2018 regular meeting, donations which are usual and customary, approval of the Bridges Grant, Budget Amendment Number One, and approval of bus services on private roads for the following: Carriage Hill, Children of America, Estates of Chancellaville, Mount Hope Baptist Church, Old Greenwich, and YMCA. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
And we have the motion by Ms. Shelley and the second by Dr. Meyer. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Information, items, includes the discipline report and items from the July 9th board meeting. Onto the instructional highlight, 10.01, the Massaponics Symphonic Orchestra Performance, which is not here. I don't know why I have this in front of me. We do not have that this evening. That got on top. This one should be on top. We're on to recognition center where is Spotsylvania High School baseball. Mrs. Farnard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. On June 9th, the varsity baseball team brought home the program's first state title and in the first in any Spotsylvania high school sport since 1997. The Knights defeated Abington High School 13 to 8 after a short ceremony in which the Spotsylvania 10 seniors wore their caps and gowns in celebration of their graduation. Mr. Kevin Marshall from Spotsylvania County School Board of Supervisors presented the seniors with their diplomas because unfortunately they were not able to be at the ceremony. The team traveled to be recognized with the D.C. Metro Area Champions at the Washington National Game on June 19th, and we are here to congratulate the Spotsylvania Knight players and their coaches. If they could please come forward and then we will recognize them by calling their names. And if you are present when you hear your name, could you just raise your hand to be acknowledged, please? We have Dante Fairchild, Dale Rup, Blake Boggs, Trevor Gallahoo, Michael Carlisle, Jonathan Olzberg, Jake Lacston, Eugene Snyder, Caleb Saul, Ethan Gallahoo, Jonathan Riverd, Brian Baker, Max Harper, Alex Bouchard, John Coleman, Zach Lynch, Austin Stanley, Trevor Croson, and of course we have our coaches Travis Payne, Caleb Decker, and John Schneider. And then stagger so I can see everybody's face. There we go. Can I? Dr. Baker, if you can stand on the side so we can... There we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more just to make sure. One, two, three. And we have any family and friends that are in the audience that support our baseball players? Could you stand to be recognized as well? And Knights, I'm sure you heard, but Dr. Hester was literally giving the score update every couple of minutes before graduation and was even on her cellphone occasionally checking just to verify your win. So congratulations.
Moving on to 11.02, Cortland High School Girls' Varsity Soccer.
Cortland High School Girls' Varsity Soccer Team advanced to the finals of the Class 4 State Championship on Saturday, June 9th. Freshman goalkeeper Olivia Haynes saved an impressive six of nine shots on goal. Senior Aaron Flam scored the Cougars' Goal of the Game during the second half. The Lady Cougars ended their season as battlefield champions, regional runner-up, and state runner-up. Their final record was 16, 3, and 1. Congratulations to an excellent season and to the following players. And again, when you hear your name, if you could please raise your hand. And in advance, I hope that I get some of your names correct, just pointing that out. You already know which one I'm going to mess up, don't you? You want to tell me now? Gaguzian, there you go. Let's start with Rowan Gaguzian. Olivia Haynes. Cassie Demos. Demos?
Yes.
Got it. Macy Burnett. Caitlin Ignudo. Madison McDermott. Kylie Reed. Alexa Walsh. Gillian Mansfield. Oh, Gillian, sorry. It's not Walsh. Atlee Thompson. Daniella Ogden. Caitlin Hoekson. Carden Nguyen. Jamie Bullman. Hannah Aiken. Elena or Alana?
Alana Clark.
Aaron Flam. Annalise Hensler. Grace Klein. Jada Sherald. Casey Wright. And Emily McDonald. And our coaches Dennis Berry, Emily Sadler, and Taylor Owen. Congratulations, girls. And if we have any family and friends in the audience that support our soccer for the Cortland, could you please stand to be recognized as well? Kind of stagger so I can see everybody's face. Stagger. Now you don't need to crouch. Just stagger. There we go. There we go. Good. All right, ready? That's Baker. One, two, three. One more just to make sure.
And then moving on to 11.03, VHSL Wells Fargo Academic Cup winner.
Thank you. And if we could have Mr. Chris Watts, Assistant Principal from Massaponics, please join us as I read the following announcement. The Wells Fargo Cup represents the best Virginia high schools have to offer in athletic and academic activities. First awarded in 1990, the Wells Fargo Cup represents excellence. Cups are presented, one for academic activities and one for athletics, in each of the VHSL's six enrollment classifications. Winners of the Wells Fargo Cup are determined by a point system based on performance in VHSL state competitions. Points are awarded for all sanctioned sports plus sportsmanship, and schools can earn academic activity points for outstanding participation in scholastic bowls, creative writing, theater, forensics, debate, film festival, broadcast, newspaper, yearbook, and magazine. This year, Massaponics High School won first place in the film festival, and they were state champions in the one-act play and forensics. The newspaper and yearbook took second place, and Massaponics ended the year with a total of 181 points. Congratulations to the Panthers.
Dr. Martin?
The public comment segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a love of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Madam Speaker, we don't have any speakers signed up this evening.
Anybody in the audience that did not sign up that wishes to address the board this evening? Mia Brooch?
Hello, my name is April Gillespie. I live in the Berkeley District. Erin Gramp is my school board member. I actually have nothing planned to say tonight because there's... I've been coming up here for months talking about the same things. My comments are not always directed towards every single school board member, as I adore many of you. But my comments are just in general for the public. At the end of the last school board meeting, one of the board members in their comments stated that he didn't feel that all the facts were presented and that maybe not everything was said the way it needed to be said. They needed to get more information, if you will. To be told that is, as a parent, is discouraging. It breaks my heart. I don't understand why the schools ask for parents' input, involvement, speak out. If you have a problem, come tell us. Voice your concerns. We want to hear it. We want, we have room for improvement. Please let us know. Why ask if you discourage a parent from saying what's happening by saying, "Well, we probably don't have all the facts here." So that just makes no sense to me, why you would do that. So there's that. Being called a liar, implied as being called a liar, that's not, that's not very nice to say to a constituent, to a parent, to a taxpayer, or just to anybody. I've been coming up here for months, along with many parents. Many parents have been coming up here telling you the same stuff over and over. I mean, month after month after month after month, we're coming up here and we're repeating ourselves over and over and over. Please help us. Please help. Help the kids. Pay attention, you know? If you don't have children in school, which many of you do not right now, then volunteer at your schools. Just pop up one day. Go see how these lunches look. Go see how these children are behaving in the classrooms. Just pop up, uninvited. I know that's frowned upon, but, I mean, if somebody knows that someone who makes policy and stuff like that is coming, they're definitely going to be on their Ps and Qs. They're going to be on their toes. So if they don't know you're coming, then they're going to be like, "Oh," you know? And then maybe you'll see what we parents are saying. I really don't know what else to say. Go by the Code of Conduct. Get rid of the MOU. We've been saying these things for months, and many of you are just sitting there like huffing and puffing. But, I mean, it's, I don't know how else to break it down or to make it more simplified. It's just that simple. The MOU is suffocating our schools. According to the General Assembly, we are still able to discipline. Yes, it has been lessened, but we are able to discipline. And as a parent with children in school, I don't see it at all. I don't see discipline. You know, somebody gets beat up on the playground. My son wanted to come speak tonight to say, "Well, I will show them what a liar they think really looks like. I will show them the scar on my face from being beaten on the playground where nothing was done." When does it, when does it stop? When is it going to stop? When are you going to hear us? Is it going to take one of our kids dying? Is it going to take a mass amount of us to remove our children from the schools and the system imploding? What is it, what is it going to take? Because I personally don't want to see any of that happen to our public schools because I happen to love Spotsylvania County schools, and that's why I keep coming up here. Not because I'm nitpicking or I'm not an advocate for schools or I love kids, I love education, I love schools, and I'm just trying to help you help us. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anybody else in the audience that did not sign up to speak? Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Wallace. I'm from the Lee Hill District. The last time I spoke, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, but because April had said, you know, there's parents that have been coming...
Would you be pleased to speak in the microphone? Thank you.
As April said, parents have been coming, and I had, the last time I spoke was when, not the shooting prior, but this mass shooting that we had prior to that. It blew my mind, and I was upset, and I came here not thinking, I didn't know what was going to come out of my mouth. But my concern is still for the safety of the kids. You know, she addressed the Code of Conduct, you know, and I had addressed it last time. You know, when I was in school, you know, I'm hearing where the bully stays in the room and the one that's getting bullied gets taken out. Well, that's kind of backwards thinking, as far as I'm concerned. You're keeping the problem in the classroom. So I'm going to address that same issue. I do have an issue with the summer vacay that we're having, that I never got a survey on about changing the dates for the schools and why the children are going to school in mid-August, the hottest time of the year, where our kids are on these buses that some don't have AC, and my concern is for that. Well, I have talked to my daughter, and you know, she's eight. She's asked me, "Mommy, are you pulling me for homeschooling?" And I said, "Well, I don't know yet. This all depends on amongst you guys that's going to make those changes." Because, you know, again, she says time and time again, it's been, everything's been brought to your guys' attention and what's going to change. You know, my child, again, is my pride and joy, God-given gift, and if my child can't go to school feeling protected, then she doesn't need to be in the school. And you know, homeschooling, they're in there eight hours a day with these teachers, and they can be at home three hours getting school done, which, you know, okay, so what are we doing? You know? I don't get it, and I just would like to see some changes. I don't know the ins and outs, but I'm here to stay because that's my daughter's education, and I want her to become something. And so I'm just addressing the same thing April had already addressed. There's no difference. And then there's other parents that have the same issues and even other issues, you know? So I really didn't know what I was going to say today, but the fact that my child is my priority, and it's not just my kid, it's everybody's kid, not just mine. They're precious, you know? And yes, we have kids that are a little off the leash a little, you know, and don't, oh, you know, we have some kids that have issues, and if we don't address those issues, they're going to become our issues years down the road. They are going to be issues. So if we're not paying attention to the kid that's sitting in the corner or sitting by themselves at the cafeteria or no one's playing with or no one's, you know, helping that child, then yes, we're going to have another shooter. And yes, is it going to take, like April said, one of our kids in Spotsylvania to be six feet under before us to realize the issues that are going on? You know, so I don't know. I don't know the answers, but I'm going to continue to come back and fight. And if I pull my kid, I'm going to continue to fight because that's the right thing to do, and it's the right thing for me to stand up for my child and others. And the other kids in their neighborhood know that. And I've talked to other parents. So they're concerned, but, you know, they'll get there, and we'll get them here so that you guys can see where the issues apply and what's going on, not just, you know, my kid. You know, I've seen bus drivers that stop literally at back behind the bushes, and then the car can come in and hit them. See that daily with the disability bus, you know? So, and not helping the little girl on the bus that can't get up on the bus. So I see this stuff. I sit at the bus stop every single day, and I get her off the bus, and I see what goes on. So I'm just addressing a little bit, you know, what April just said, and then, you know, if anything else comes to mind, I'll bring it up next time. So thank you for letting me share here.
Anybody else in the audience that did not sign up that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, that closes public comments and moves us to special reports. Item 13.01, Board Committee Reports. Would any board member have a board committee report? Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a liaison for the Cortland renovation, I just want to report to the board that everything is going very well at Cortland, and because we have a short summer this year, the effort, main effort of construction has now went to the cafeteria. And I'm glad they know exactly what they're doing because they've done a great job of tearing it up, so I'm looking forward to seeing them build it back up and being in place, ready for school when we have an early start this year. So I would just report to all the board members that there is a lot going on at Cortland High School. Every morning when I stop by to see weightlifting in the morning, there's something going on, and it's very well orchestrated by Rusty Davis, and he provides great feedback as to the progress of everything that's going on at Cortland. So we... So we're, we're excited and delighted each and every day to see what the end result's gonna be, but I have every indication that it's gonna be absolutely fabulous. So that, with that being said, that's my report.
Any other board committee reports?
Say a couple of words, yeah.
Mr. Bling?
I just have a couple of words to say about, first of all, uh, our Governor's School, starting its 21st year, celebrated its anniversary, uh, throughout the last, last school year. And I'm excited and we have a brand-new director and so we'll all have an opportunity to meet her at a later time. In terms of the Career and Tech Center, if you watch the newspapers or they're, listen to the radio often, you find that there's more and more things related to the Career and Tech Center and the kind of training, certification, and so on that our young people are getting, uh, through that particular location here. And, uh, we have an outstanding Career and Tech group and you can watch the newspapers. I know over the next year and two and three, you're gonna see more and more, uh, attention paid and more and more boys and girls enrolling. So I'm very pleased to be able to associate myself with the Career and Tech Center as well as the Governor's School.
Any other board committee reports? We'll move to there. We're doing it after special reports 'cause I got mine. On item thirteen point zero two, Dr. Baker, Superintendent's Report?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I, I wanted to, uh, just take a few moments to, uh, again congratulate our, uh, special recognition awardees this evening. I, um, it's, they're all very special and I wanted to start out and, and just congratulate the Spotsylvania High School baseball team and the players, the coaches, the, the entire community. I, I was really appreciative that on that same day that we, um, witnessed three graduations, including Spotsylvania High School, that, uh, the Principal, Dr. Hester, uh, others invited whoever could come to, uh, see the team return on their bus uh, with, uh, you know, an escort from the Sheriff's Department and the fire and rescue and, uh, and they had raised a, you know, the flag, uh, on one of the units and it, and it, what really struck me was that it was all about the team, you know, how they had fought for each other, how they had fought, um, for their coaches and how they had fought for their school and community. And it was just wonderful to get to experience the community's, um, acknowledgement of that effort, especially given that it is the first, uh, baseball state championship in the school's history, a long, illustrious history. And so again, congratulates, congratulations to them and, and again, it was a wonderful thing to get to be a part of. Congratulations to our soccer, uh, varsity soccer girls from the Cortland High School. Again, it, it takes so much to get to that point and I, I know from playing sports that, you know, just every game at that level, the intensity and, and the preparation and you can again, just see that it's all about the team and representing their school and their community and their fellow students. And I, I wanted to again, I wish they were still here, but congratulate them again for their, their achievement. And finally, I hope that you'll, you'll take a moment to review all of the various criteria and, and how the points are awarded with the Wells Fargo Academic Cup that, uh, appreciate, um, our representative from Mass Ponics being here to receive that on behalf of many students and many staff. But it represents really well-rounded academic and extracurricular opportunities and creative talents that, that are, you know, certainly abundant at Mass Ponics High School. And like other award, awards, uh, the quality of the teachers and sponsors cannot be overstated because it's one thing to offer opportunities, it's another thing to have folks that inspire our students and to really bring the best out of them in, in all of those different areas. A very quick update, um, I wanna thank, uh, all of our leaders, uh, from our executive leaders at the division level to our principals, to our teachers. So many folks have helped to, over the past year really, try to begin planning for what is a compressed summer in terms of getting everything ready for that first day. And I, again, from what I was, was reported to me this morning, it's not without its challenges, but making really good progress on a number of fronts in being ready for that first day. That how of preparing, uh, really involves everybody and really involves folks having much less time to take, uh, to, to get away or to reflect, but I appreciate everyone's hard work. And then finally, uh, more to come on, we have preliminary SOL, Standards of Learning Results. Uh, uh, to just share a little bit with the board, what we hope in August and September is that those results become, um, they crystallize and they become more, uh, permanent. Uh, we look forward to sharing, uh, a full comprehensive report uh, with you and the public on how our schools continue to perform. But the preliminary results indicate, especially with the inclusion of the new growth model, uh, that the state is gonna be a part of our future accreditation process, that we're seeing continuous improvement throughout our schools and in a number of content areas. And even if you take away that growth model and you just look at straight pass rates, we still have a number of schools that have demonstrated improvement and a number of areas that we're seeing improvement even at a division level. Uh, so look forward to providing more, uh, at those upcoming meetings. And I'll, I'll conclude with, this next year, we will be looking at, uh, what we've achieved over the last five years in terms of the implementation of our current Division Strategic Plan. At the same time, we're gonna begin turning the page in the development of a new six-year plan, um, that will take us to 2025. Uh, we also have, uh, some, um, survey results that were part of a comprehensive survey that we, a stakeholder survey that we, uh, for the past couple of months in, in the spring put out. And we look forward to having a presentation of those results that will also help to inform our future strategic plan. So with that, uh, thank you for your time and I'll conclude.
Before we move on to item thirteen point zero three, Ms. Shelley, would you like to share with us a moment of silence?
It is with much sadness that I ask you to join me for a moment of silence for Riverbend High School Junior, Robert L. Trey Brown III, who passed away on July 4th. He will be greatly missed. Our thoughts of sorrow are with his family at this time. Please share a moment of silence. Thank you.
And we have a, a second moment of silence. It is with much sadness that I share that one of our employees recently passed away. Mr. Steckler was a substitute bus driver. He began working for our division in 2004, oh, five, and then returned in 2017. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Steckler. He touched the lives of many and will be missed tremendously. Thank you. And that brings us to thirteen point zero three, the modernization of FY19 health insurance rates, lowered Key Care 500 employee premium rates. Mrs. Colbert, Mr. Treier?
Madam Chair, to the members of the school board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, good evening. Over the past couple of years, the members of both the finance and HR teams have partnered to seek ways to modernize our he- current health insurance and dental benefits. Throughout this process, we have engaged employees and sup- um, and sought their feedback while simultaneously consulting with Mr. Lee Duskins, our healthcare consultant. Mr. Duskins is here with us on this evening to assist as needed in addressing any questions you may have. For tonight's presentation, Mr. Treier and I will provide updates and considerations for the board specifically on health plan design, which would lower the Key Care 500 employee premium rates for two thou- for FY19. After hearing from employees regarding the rate increases for Key Care 500, particularly those enrolled in the family plan, staff followed up with Anthem in June to determine if additional adjustments may be considered to lower the Key Care 500 employee rates. In tonight's presentation, we will cover the following items, um, the adopted FY19 health insurance benefit summary, additional options for consideration in regards to plan design changes, Key Care 500 reduced employee premium, as well as next steps for the board's consideration. This slide includes our health insurance census data. You will see that 73% of approximately of our 2,000 employees are on our plans, while 27% are not as of this current enrollment period. 65% of our employees who are on our plans are on our most robust plan of Key Care Expanded. 43% of those employees, of our employees are on the single plan tier, while 36% are on the family plan tier. We also would like to remind the board that the Key Care 200 plan will be eliminated effective October 1 of 2018 as recommended by the Employee Compensation Focus Group due to low participation. Finally, to highlight that this presentation, especially with the option of loan-wearing employee premiums, will affect approximately 670 employees who are currently on Key Care 500. I would also like to point out that after the open enrollment period, which starts in August, staff will provide updated figures to the board for this slide to show how many employees decide to maintain the Key Care Expanded or to migrate to Key Care 500.
Okay, thank you. Last two years, the, uh, the, the board has worked with staff in order to, to curtail the rising health insurance costs and the results of your efforts have been savings of $1.8 million for both FY18 and FY19. This increased our budget capacity by $3.6 million in FY19, which was used to help fund staff increases, uh, in salaries as, as well as staffing levels. Um, in FY19, your efforts included the, to, to reduce healthcare costs and, and to modernize our plan. As Michelle mentioned, we eliminated the Key Care 200 plan. Um, Key Care, uh, Expanded and Key Care 500, both, both plans did experience higher employee contributions. Uh, we added an employee plus spouse tier. Um, this was, uh, more of an effort to retain this, this, this level. Many employees in the area have eliminated, uh, employee plus spouse if the spouse is el- is eligible for employees with their home, with, with, with their own employment. We chose not to do that. Uh, we have added this, this, uh, tier, uh, which, which, which we think is, is a benefit for our employments to allow this to continue. Uh, we increased our co-pay, uh, the Key Care Expanded only, not 500. Key Care Expanded, uh, plan design did get modified by this and the 500 did not. And we modified our prescription drug options as, as seen at the bottom of the slide. Um, the results of this was a year-on-year comparison where Key Care Expanded experienced modest increase where Key Care 500, again, their, their plan design did not change, did in, did increase significantly. And we received feedback, uh, from the staff after the contracts went out and we, we were charged to, to pursue other avenues to, to see if we could remedy this situation. As a result of our efforts, we, we do have a revised cost structure for the 500 plan, which would reduce the rates significantly. Uh, it would increase their co-pays, just like Expanded, by $5, but overall, we would be adding a, uh, a, uh, new essential formulary list prescription drug, drug plan. And this is something that, uh, the county is, is migrated towards for FY19. Uh, it is, it is gonna steer, uh, employees to drugs that are the most cost-effective, be it generic, um, uh, over-the-counter, this type of things that are most of cost-effective for the employees to still, and still receive the same level of treatment. Wanted to remind you that, uh, folks that are on Key Spirit, Key Care Expanded, which is a majority of our employees, uh, will be able to experience additional savings, greater savings with this revised plan down to 500 if they chose to do so. The impact, we, we did receive some, some, some feedback about the impact. Our, our original analysis for the impact on the health insurance was, was based on single coverage only. Um, we did receive, uh, uh, feedback from both board and employees and as a result, we, we went ahead and looked at this and, uh, um, we, we have revised our figures and we will have a number of employees negatively impacted their gross paycheck, 76 employees, 2.5%. Uh, uh, for the revised consideration, it would be one employee. Okay, Michelle?
In viewing this slide, you will see that the division has already increased the co-pays by $5 for doctor visits for the Key Care Expanded plan, but not for Key Care 500. Um, the recommendation to adjust the co-pays for 500 is coming about because the saving amount is minimal. Most of the claims occur on the Key Care Expanded plan. So because of the number of participants enrolled on the Key Care 500, the employees will not see the same impact in terms of the adjustment and their increase in the employee contribution. So moving on to the prescription drug cost modifications, they were made to both plans as discussed earlier, but additional changes that are being considered would be for the board to maintain the Key Care 500 rates adopted in April, on April 16th. So we could maintain that and could consider implementing Anthem's new essential formulary. Now keep in mind to garner the savings needed to bring down significantly the Key Care 500 rates as illustrated in the presentation, the formulary changes must change on both plans. So in order for those participants on the Key Care 500 to realize any reduction in their increase, we would be looking at the formulary changes for both Expanded and 500. Most of the savings are coming from the Key Care Expanded plan as in, as is, this is the election coverage selected by most employees. Anthem does not permit us to have two different formulary structures for the plans. The next slide will give you some information more specifically about what revised formulary list means. Um, the Anthem Prescription Drug Formulary is a list of preferred drug selections by a panel of physicians and pharmacists. These preferred drugs include both generic and preferred brand drugs, name, brand, excuse me, preferred brand name drugs. All drugs are evaluated on their comparative efficiency, uniqueness, and cost-effectiveness. The formulary is revised on a regular basis to reflect the availability of new prescription drugs and other changes in the market. Anthem is implementing a new essential formulary list that could save some additional funds, approximately $800,000. This change will impact both Key Care Expanded and Key Care 500's plan and this essential formulary list was not shared with the school division until recently in 2000, June of 2018. If adopted by the school board, the division could reduce the FY19 Key Care 500 employee rates as requested by employees. Um, again, Mr. Treier has referenced that our county has also approved, um, their employees to utilize the new essential formulary. Just some additional information of what is essential formulary. Essential drug list covers high-quality affordable drugs that are essential to members' health. The essential drug list excludes medications that cost more so that it is easier to find the most cost-effective choices. cost-effective choices. In addition, they offer a variety of brands and generic medication choices. They provide savings by excluding drugs that are multi-sourced and brand with generic equivalents or over-the-counter medications. It includes drugs that don't have over-the-counter or lower-cost alternatives. They also offer limited specialty drug coverage. They maintain clinical integrity without compromising the quality and the safety, and ongoing review of the list through the pharmacy and therapeutic process occurs. Anthem did provide us an impact analysis. This is something that they've been looking at for a little while now, and the impact analysis is based on March 12, 2018 data. When we look at the analysis, we see that it is advantageous to move to this formulary for 55 patients. The patients do not just include the employee themselves, but it includes their dependents as well, which would include their spouses or children. It is neutral for almost 5,000 of our patients, and then it does have an adverse effect for 1,773 of our employees and/or their dependents. The proposed changes would impact 12.14% of our claims, but 37.87% of the cost. In terms of next steps, you will see that certainly we have provided you some information for consideration. Should we move forward with any adjustments, then we would share some communication with our employees on tomorrow. July 12, Anthem rates would be updated for FY19. By July 16, the payroll would enter the revised employee rates into the system. By July 19, Mark III would print the benefit booklets that they provide for us each year. And then August 1 through the 31st would be our open enrollment period. And then our new payroll contributions will begin September 30, and then October 1, the benefits actually are in effect at that point. So, at this time, we will close out the information that we have. We can respond to any questions, and then you all can transition and consider those pieces as you continue to look at the budget revisions.
As you presented on Slide 13, if you go to that slide, can, talk about advantageous and neutral. Can you elaborate more on what would be considered adverse?
We'll have Mr. Duskins help us with that.
Mr. Duskins has the...
When it refers to an adverse situation, what's happening is the drug that the person is on is either moving to a higher tier, so the co-payment would increase, or it could even be being moved off of the formulary, so they would have to choose a different drug for that particular condition. So, that's what adverse or negative would mean.
Okay, thank you.
Similar question. So, is there a general cost of what the drugs will cost for the employees? I know we had, you know, tier one is 15, and so on, and so on. Is that going to remain the same?
Yes, the tier payment amount is the same. What will be happening, though, as you see, like where it says 55 advantageous, well, they may be on a tier-two drug now that becomes a tier-one drug. So, the co-pay actually will go down for those few. Most people will be in that neutral category, and then you have those that will need to look at other alternatives, either have their drug moved to a higher tier, or it could be actually eliminated, and they would get with their physician.
So, there are, if it's eliminated, there are alternative medications, so if somebody has a special drug for cancer, they're not going to say, oh, sorry, you're not, there's nothing that we can have. There will be an alternative.
Right, they have alternatives for each of the drugs.
Okay. Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually excited that we considered making some structural changes to the plan of insurance, realizing that a great deal of the savings could be realized there. And my question really is, is that we have a status quo course of action. We have a course of action that says increase the co-pay by $5 to $20. Why didn't we consider one to raise the co-pay to $25 or an increase of $10? So, if you could address how you develop the course of action to present to us where a $10 increase was not considered.
Can I just, I just, I know that Mr. Duskins can give a much more technically sufficient answer than I'll provide. I just wanted to share, maybe to get that ball rolling, that in general, the question that really came up is that, as you saw from one of the previous slides, that we addressed the co-pay on the Expanded side, but we didn't address it at all on the 500 side. And so, with the knowledge of the formulary adjustment helping us to really create the same amount of savings as the adopted budget by the school board, we felt like that that combination was right now. And not only would we significantly reduce the amount of, you know, paycheck, you know, payroll deductions that would come for people accessing that plan, we would also not be hitting them with that much out-of-pocket. So, we were trying to take away kind of the quote-unquote sticker shock of the adjustments, especially when we hope to sustain this 4% pay increase over the next few years. But it's a big deal that we're able to do that, and so we wanted to maximize for our employees that benefit for this year. I don't think it's out of the question structurally for us to consider additional increases to the co-pay, but it seemed to find a sweet spot with the $5 on that side, and then the formulary change. But I'll let Mr. Duskins expand upon that.
And if I may jump in as well, from working with Employee Compensation Focus Group, we garnered a lot of their feedback as well. And so, we were listening to previous survey data that we had received from employees even prior to this fiscal year, that our employees didn't support a lot of changes to the plan itself, the design changes. So, we were also trying to, as Dr. Baker shared, have a balance there where we were making those incremental changes to the plan design where it had as least impact on the employees as possible. So, trying to honor the feedback that we've received, but also taking into consideration that we do have to continue to study and look at what we're doing in terms of our health insurance benefits, so that we can sustain the pay increases that we do believe that our employees deserve. Does that help?
We did, just so that you know, we did look at a $10 change, and this was the one that was decided to be presented. The $5 change is consistent with what we'd already done with the Expanded Plan. So, I mean, I think that's the reason.
So, you're saying that it was screened out as a course of action? For what reason?
Well, I mean, I think when we present to the board and are trying to get a decision on a very short timeframe, that that probably, you know, makes sense.
I think it's, is it also fair, Mr. Duskins and Ms. Colbert, Mr. Treyer, is it also fair to say that we were, the board adopted a budget back in April, and I think that we were trying to say, in terms of estimates, how can we make these structural changes that you pointed out, Mr. Braswell, without the board having to adopt a different budget, you know, that has additional savings or additional surplus? We were trying to just find that, that area. And I think the five, it wasn't that the, I think the $10 was screened out. If we had needed additional co-pay to get us to the same amount of savings that as they went through, that we had gotten with the 1.8 million savings with the initial structural changes, which included the pay or the rate increases, I think we would have gone to $10 or even 15 to consider that, to get us to the same amount of savings. But it was really that we were able to do that amount along with the formulary that got us estimate-wise right in that, that area of savings that the board had already worked hard to achieve.
I appreciate the clarification that it was done for budgetary reasons because of budgets already been prepared. I would argue that in out-years, it's probably much more cost-effective to consider a $10 increase. For example, if a person went to the doctor twice a month, we're talking possibly an increase in, of co-pay of $120, as opposed to a premium increase that could be substantially more. So, I just think that's something that we need to weigh, because Mr. Treyer marked it exactly on the slide where we saved $3.6 million, which is responsible to the taxpayers of this county, and which we clearly indicated to others, that that's a three-penny tax savings, and people should be excited about that. At least those that call themselves a conservative should be excited about that. And we set the model for it in a way that was, is done in a way where we can also take care of our employees. So, thank you for your work in considering that as a course of action. The reason I asked the question is I wanted to know why we screened it out, and that makes sense to me. But I think in out-years, we can build more budget capacity if we consider those courses of action when we have more time.
I, you know, I think that we're in agreement, I think, with what Mr. Braswell is suggesting, that we do have to consider that. I think it was part of the consideration even throughout what was proposed in the budget for this year. But I want to just remind the board that we are in both a potential and actual state of transition, as you look over the next few years, and trying to adjust our healthcare plans. So, I think that's another consideration, at least it is for this superintendent. If we're going to be not only looking at potential structural changes, but significant plan changes and options over the next few years, why put our employees in any sort of perpetual feeling of disadvantage, that every time we do a pay increase, we keep hitting them either directly from their paychecks or out-of-pocket? So, how can we minimize that really and perceptually while we're in a state of transition over time? So, I think that was, you know, big picture. Another reason why, can we do this with just five? Can we do this with six? But what can we do to minimize that impact, knowing that we're going to be making more changes over the next few years?
Ms. Shelley?
Just to follow up with what Mr. Braswell said about the savings. So, just a little bit of math, if I did it correctly. The savings from the, what we had adopted, to what, if we change it, would be eight, for a family plan, would be $80, actually $82 a month savings from what we had in April. And then with that $5 increase, that's like 16 visits to the doctor's office to make, to make up that $80, and that would be for a whole family. And I hope nobody has to go to the doctor for 16 times in a month, but that's what that savings would be. So, I think it sounds like a really good thing. I'm just, yeah.
Dr. Baker?
I think it is commendable what you're trying to achieve, to make the 500 Plan more appealing, because that was one of the objectives when we went in through the budget process and the review of the health insurance plans. And I do recall, you know, that when we were talking about how can we garner a little bit of savings, the $5 co-pay increase was the least disruptive, but garnered the most benefit. It was not to be, intended to be that's the only solution, but it was intended to be a starting point, that we would then, is another option, another, you know, tool in the toolbox that we can use moving forward. But we had to start somewhere. Changing the formulary, I'm accustomed to having received in the mail from Anthem as the formularies change. I think we all do, at least, you know, I know I have received. So, I think taking advantage of this and then applying it to the 500 tier, but also, as you mentioned, the county likewise is taking advantage of that, and I truly think we should as well. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments before we? Well, but the next action item, but there's other information first, so can we separate the action item and vote on this separately?
I think we've included it to be a part of the action item, so whatever the motion is would include approval or whatever the motion is for this. But if we can just have Ms. Flannard come up and join Mr. Treyer.
So, that brings us to 14.01, Approval of Budget Amendment Number Two, Request to Appropriate Additional State Funds and Approval of the Revised FY19 Key Care 500 Employee Premium Rates.
Okay. Now, on June 7, 2018, the governor signed the FY19 budget. The result of this was an increase of state funding to Spotsylvania County Public Schools of $868,877. Staff has provided the board some potential budgetary uses for this, and we ask that you consider this and to consider asking the board to supervise us for appropriation of these funds. The items that we have listed, we have, first item, number one, $250,000 for the Power School software. This is an item that was reduced during the budgetary process, and thus...
Mr. Treyer, just one second, I also want to make sure, does the school board have in front of them a handout? Do you have the options in front of you in a handout or on your, I just want to make sure everyone has the reference.
Okay.
I know some printed them out, and I know that...
On Board Docs as well.
It's on Board Docs as well.
As an attachment to this agenda item.
I just want to give every, I want to make sure that all the board members have that in front of them to follow along, because I don't think it's in the form of an electronic presentation.
I'll let you take it from there.
I'll just look at the, I'm looking at the nods, so I think we're, I think we're good. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, first item is the Power School. Second item would be recurring curriculum materials. We have this slotted for approximately $300,000. It would be recommended utilization towards middle school math, high school math, and high school English. We'd also like you to consider the potential to increase school-based allocations. We're looking at approximately $300,000 on this line item as well. School-based allocations have been significantly reduced over the past few years. Schools are consistently requesting additional funding for interventions, remediation, curriculum, instruction materials. So, this would go a long ways to help address that issue. The next item would be additional funding for stipends for new teacher mentors. In an effort to retain quality new teachers, ongoing support and training is required. The Office of Human Resources is requesting approval to extend the mentor-teacher program from one year to two years. This would involve assigning new teachers a paid mentor for two years rather than just one year. This should assist with teacher retention and enhance teacher growth. We currently have approximately 120 teacher mentors. The costs associated with this would be between $55,000 and $65,000 a year. The next item to consider is school resource, school security officers, SSOs. Recruit and hire and hire SSOs for middle schools, or in the interim, or in the interim be utilized as elementary schools without a full-time SRO for the start of the school year. This should enhance school safety, and we're looking at approximately $210,000 for this line item. We also have one-time classroom materials and supplies, approximately $250,000. Classroom materials supplies in lieu of out-of-pocket spending would be to use the one-time $250,000 in local transfers to address this need. Our final item is something that's kind of bubbled up in the last few... Our final item is, is something that's, that's kind of bubbled up in the last few weeks and that's the hiring of an internal auditor. The price tag with this would be approximately $120,000 and potential duties would include cost-benefit impact on policies and procedures, contract audits, IT audits, health insurance reviews and analysis, facilities and construction audits, and department efficiency reviews. So these are the items that we have for you to consider and we will address any questions that you may have at this time.
I just want to make a couple of very quick points as, as you form your questions, if they're not already formed. One is the, towards the bottom, and I'm not looking at it, I'm just speaking from memory. The $250,000, you'll recall that in the adopted transfer from the Board of Supervisors, our, our county body, that they were providing $250,000 of one-time funding. So I think it is fair to say that you can consider that as part of that, using that one-time funding. If this other additional amount is, is actually appropriated, then it would enable us to use recurring funding for some of those non-comp instructional needs. But we really are excited about the possibility of, in some way, creating a startup instructional supply store that not only helps students, but helps teachers when you consider that we know that there's a lot of research out there about how much teachers spend out of pocket for various items and had an opportunity this year just to again inform that item. I've appreciated not only board members such as Mr. Twig bringing up their knowledge of that concern, but also to bring up that I engaged probably about 60 of our teacher advisory team members and it was, they really illuminated, you know, for us, the various things that they find themselves trying to, to provide for their classrooms above and beyond what is provided through either school-based allocations or through the school division budget. And so we believe through the use of the grant-funded Rover that we can, throughout the school year, provide opportunities for our teachers, our schools to, you know, we stock that bus and they can get on and choose items that they need for their classrooms based on the needs that they've supported us with, by providing. And then they don't have to spend as much, if any, out of pocket. So just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And then the other, just as a reminder, school security officers are, is a position that we've had in the school division for a number of years at the high school level where we have two for each high school. These are not armed security personnel, but they do go through a level of training that helps them to provide additional security eyes and ears support with the overall security planning between the principal and the sheriff's department. Knowing that we're going to be working with the sheriff's office and again, very thankful to our county body for providing additional support to the sheriff's office, we know it'll be the better part of the next year before there will be the full-time SRO in every school. So two things to consider with that. One, that in the interim, we could make sure that the seven schools that do not start the year with that full-time could possibly start the year with at least a security person. The other thing long-term is, once every school has the full-time SRO, we would then say prioritize the middle schools to have one per middle school as an additional support. Not saying that's what the board should do at this time, but just making sure that you have an understanding of it in advance. Thank you.
Before we make a motion to have discussion on this, I just want to clarify so that the board knows what the motion is going to be about. There is enough additional state funds, because we didn't do the revenue side of this, just the expense side of this, to do all of the suggestions or a combination of the suggestions?
It would be a combination. We, we certainly cannot afford the entire list. It, it would be something that the board would have to pick and choose and prioritize. We, we did put item number one up top for a reason though, so.
So is there a target number we're trying to get to on our motion?
Yeah, $868,000.
Ms. Shelley?
Because there's going to be discussion on this and I have, we're not, I'm not making a motion yet. Was wondering if I could separate a motion out for the healthcare and then we have another motion so we can discuss the 800 something thousand dollars. And then I also, after we make the motion for that 800 plus thousand dollars, I have another question, but I'm going to wait till we make our motion for that.
Are you making the motion?
I'm going to make the motion. I'm, I'm making sure I do it right. Would this be budget amendment number two then and then the other one, three?
One would have a financial impact. It would be budget amendment number two. As far as health insurance, that does not have a financial impact on our budget.
Okay, so, all right, then I would like to make a motion to approve the revised fiscal year 2019 Key Care 500 employee premium rates.
Madam Chair, can I add to that to, we have to have the approval of the formulary in order to be able to do that. You can't do one without the other.
Yes, that is part of the, the, the.
Okay, if it's part of the rates, I just want to make sure because, you know, the formulary is what's providing the means for us to be able to do a different rate structure, which impacts both the expanded and the 500.
That and.
But I'll, I'll, I'll second the motion. We'll at least understand.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Shelley, a second by Dr. Meyer, to approve the revised FY19 Key Care 500 employee premium rate structure. Any discussion on the health insurance structure? Mr. Braswell, Mr. Twig, any discussion on the health insurance motion? There's a motion on the floor. We're about, all those in favor of approving the health insurance rate structure?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried 7-0. Now, Ms. Shelley, for, for your question prior to the motion for the action item for the 868,000.
Are we going to get the money from the Board of Supervisors? They have put the money on hold from my understanding.
We would have to request it. Yes, ma'am.
We have to request it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just, because of, I wasn't really understanding what happened last week at their meeting.
Um, I, let me just share with the board that it would, I believe, be the, our intention at the joint August, I believe, 14th meeting that this board would have with the Board of Supervisors. It would be at that meeting that we would be requesting whatever the board approves in terms of the amendment for the, for them to appropriate that funding. And then certainly we would explain it to them once this board has made that final decision. But it would be at this point scheduled for that meeting for the proposition to occur.
Okay, Ms. Graham.
Ms. Shelley?
How do we go about making a motion for what we don't know yet?
I concur. Dr. Meyer?
You can, you can make a motion, once you have decided what items and the amounts that you would like to be included that make up the 868,000. Then you have done your work as a, as a school board, you have budgeted the funds. Then it becomes the Board of Supervisors that would then have to make the decision on whether to appropriate it per the, our recommendation or not, or a portion of it. But you, you would need to do that irregardless of what the decision would be down the road.
I had a motion ready, so, because with the math, so we can, obviously it's based on everybody's priorities, but as far as my priorities go, reinstating the auditor position is not a, a new topic. It was a position that we held in the schools division before and the position just had to go away with budget cuts. So it is again, reinstating of something, a position that we've already had and we've been working for years to get back. So an internal audit position, I think, is definitely a priority. And then the five SSOs, because security has been a big topic for us this year. I think it is, is a, is an important thing and that brings us to 270,000. So that's, I mean, sorry, 500. And, sorry, I lied again. Whatever that brings us to.
330,000.
Right.
330.
There you go, 230.
330.
330.
330.
So as far as that, those are the two priorities on my part. The rest of the dollars, you guys could fill in the motion. And the one-time funds, Mr. Treyer, are included in that 868?
That would be included.
So when we're trying to get to 868, we could just already put in the motion that 250 is for classroom supplies and we don't include that or we do?
No, not the classroom supplies.
If the board chooses to add that to, it would be part of the.
Of the 868. That's what I thought. Okay. So those are my top two priorities. Ms. Phelps?
I have a couple of questions. Is there a motion on the floor? Did you make a motion? Oh, I thought you said that was your motion. Okay.
I agree in the motion that I would make.
Oh, that you would make. Okay, okay, good. I didn't want to overstep. So we don't know exactly that the Board of Supervisors will appropriate. I, I think they held back $1 million and then plus we're asking for use of the 868,000 from the state. Am I correct?
True.
Okay.
But that's designated to the schools.
To the schools.
We don't ask for the use.
So, so can this allocation or part of the 868 be put towards the CIP?
Um.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. That's the operational fund too.
What was that?
No, no, yes. She's correct.
Okay, okay. I couldn't hear you. So, do you know on the, the Power School software, we have Google classrooms and that's free? Is that free now?
Yes, Google.
Is Google different than Power School software?
Yes, it is. Actually, the Power School software is how our teachers at all levels, elementary, middle and high, are creating common formative assessments that are directly linked to the SOL that are skill-based and developed by unit so that our teachers are able to readily access data on how students are performing on specific SOL skills. It also replaces some of the SOLs that are, have had, each grade levels had tests removed. And so while students, while our teachers are getting professional learning on really doing project-based learning and utilizing the opportunities for rubric development in order to meet the state requirements, we have been using Power School in order to do that. The concern from instruction perspective is that the Power School is an item that we have allocated each year in our budget and then unfortunately we've had to remove and this would be an opportunity to actually get it as a, as a budgeted item instead of utilizing carryover funds, which obviously are not always guaranteed.
And the recurring curriculum materials, is that for software or textbooks?
No, actually, our current curriculum budget is really only to replace textbooks that are no longer usable because they've been damaged. And so currently in the budget, we do not have a line item for really the typical curriculum annual process in which we review according to our board policy and make sure that we are in alignment with the state. And so at this point, we have done, as a school system, the board will recall that we have already redone elementary literacy extensively and also have done middle school English as well. And so it does, the, the 300,000 is really just a step towards creating a budget again where we have a curriculum budget for the continual process of making sure we have the latest and greatest for our students. Because right now, we have not finished middle school or high school math or high school math as well as science and social, we can go on and on and for all the things that we would like to be able to do.
And, and so this goes, I'm just going down the list of my questions before I even make an informed or a decision. The SSOs, it has, what is it, 30,000 for five SSOs. Does that include health benefits included in that?
I'm sorry, it's for seven?
No, the total is five times.
Right, I got that, but that, does that include the health benefits?
I think, yeah, I think the question is, in the 30,000, does that include benefits per the individual position? Mr. Treyer?
I'll have to verify that number. That does seem a little low to, to include benefits.
I don't think it does.
Yes, it does?
I don't believe that it would.
Okay, yeah.
Because of the, the cost of that.
Yeah.
But I, I, I'm just going to speak without, and Ms. Gaines put that together. I, I think that that is either fully loaded or it's an estimate. And so you certainly, per individual, could come out higher or maybe slightly lower than that. It would depend. But I, but I think you can go ahead and for the purposes of, of your decision, count on those numbers as being accurate for the entire position.
And so, one other, which is close to my heart, the Rover supply store. How, how is that going to facilitate and help the teachers with their supplies? Is it, do they make a schedule or, I mean, how is it brought to them in order for them?
Well, that's a great question. We're, we're going to have to, I wish I could tell you that we've already mapped it out. What we, when we spoke with, a lot of these ideas came from, we learned at this year's VSBA conference, we had seen a school division that had developed a, a store similar to what we're talking about, but they didn't do it on a, a bus. You know, they had it in a, I think, a central location. So in working with Ms. Daniels, we wanted to be able to take it out frequently to different areas and schools. So we would create a schedule and we might even create a, a sign-up. Am I right with that, Ms. Daniels? You can come up if you'd like because I know this is her, her passion too, so.
So what we're getting ready to do with our teachers, we're actually getting ready to do a survey to find out what's the types of things that they want for their classroom. What do they need besides just the basic, we know glue sticks, we know tissue. But are there other things that they want to be using for their classroom for specific activities or assignments that they work on, projects, things like that? So once we have that information, what we're planning to do is we will be taking the bus out to different quadrants and we're going to rotate it. So we've already mapped it, we've actually already mapped it out. He doesn't know it yet. But we've mapped it out and we've got it set up with time. So the teachers will actually, we will drive to certain locations, we will advertise that we will be at that location at that time. Teachers will be able to go onto the bus, get whatever they need and walk off the bus. So we're very excited about it.
And the reason, it's a good question. The reason that we're looking at the one-time startup funds is that I think our goal over time is to have different donation-type funding or grants that can help us to replenish it. But 250,000 would, would be a huge start in terms of being able to keep it going for, for a while. But it is something that we'd want ongoing to find different revenue streams, even if it's continuing annually, to look at different one-time sources to be able to, to buy those types of items and whatever bulk is, is necessary.
And one last thing, I'm on my last one, sorry. I'm on number seven. I was going down my list. So I was looking at the internal auditor to reinstate it, I guess like Ms. Graham said, I would be in support of the internal auditor hired by the school board. But who would hire that internal auditor and would they report to the school board or the superintendent or CFO?
Well, that has yet to be determined. Normally, I, I think that we, we would have some sort of audit committee, but, but that would have to be worked out between the board and the superintendent, I think. That, that, that final structure has not been set up at this time.
I think our initial recommendation would be to find a way for the board to make that process as independent of any internal or external influences as possible. So I think again, broad, that individual or if later on its individuals would, would have perhaps an audit structure or committee structure, but they would ultimately report to the school board. In terms of the hiring process, that might need to be something that is worked out in terms of a collaborative. in terms of, uh, a collaborative process where on the administrative side, we help to hire that person with the board's, um, support of, of developing the criteria for, for selection. But those are, again, just our responses, uh, you know, off the cuff regarding that question.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my concern is that we have, uh, when I added up the columns, uh, there's obviously more than eight hundred thousand dollars there. And what I don't see is, um, some, uh, clearly defined course of action to weigh as to how I would like to vote. I don't know if, uh, these are all priorities, at what level of priority, what combinations of these would we put together. For example, Ms. Grant mentioned, uh, that if she had an opportunity to develop a course of action, it would, uh, include, uh, an internal auditor and, um, school safety, uh, and then, you know, whatever, whatever else. But, okay, that would be, I guess, the Grant course of action. But I would like to know what course of action, uh, instruction would have, or the school superintendent would have, and, and how would we weigh them? So we can make a, you know, receive a good, uh, uh, make a good, uh, decision as to which course of action we would, uh, choose, or, and then blend maybe, uh, other courses of action to be considered. Uh, so my initial, I mean, I, 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 I think it's a great thing that the money's there. I think it's a great thing that we have an opportunity to choose from these wonderful opportunities. Uh, but it would be my intention at this time to table this course of action until we had, uh, I mean, this, uh, action item, until we had, uh, some plausible course of action to choose from. That, that's where I'm at right now unless somebody can tell me something different.
Well, let me, um, and I'm gonna, um, you know, make some, uh, appropriate eye contact with Ms. Flannard as I'm speaking, so that we're, you know, in one accord. But I, I will share with the board, one of the reasons that we provided a number of options in terms of the board having a, a consensus discussion on courses of action rather than the staff explicitly saying, here's what we recommend to get you to this amount, is partly because this is money that additionally, we did not know was going to come because we did not have an adopted state budget when the board passed its budget and our initial projections were not up to that hundred, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The other reason is, uh, back to the, um, importance of when this is presented for, um, the county board's consideration for appropriation. I believe it's very important that this board, you receive a lot of input from constituents, including staff members, as do we, uh, on the staff. And I wanted, and still want you to be able to, um, have a discussion about priorities from the board's individual and collective perspective. Having said all of that, um, I, I can help and recommend that of those items, if you take the first two, um, the curriculum materials, uh, were not specified in that amount, but the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was explicitly in the original recommended budget by myself and then the board's, uh, rec, the board's, uh, approved budget. I believe that if you started with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this is just a recommendation, that would be for us, that is, uh, keeping with the integrity of what we originally recommended based on the needs and what we thought the available amount of funding was going to be. Then you do not necessarily have to choose three hundred thousand as a starting point, knowing that we're trying to build over time, um, a little bit more each year for curricular materials. So you could, if you would like to get a combination of many of the other options, choose one hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars. But I would say, beginning with the two fifty, and then at least a minimum of a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand on the curricular materials, from the staff perspective, that keeps with what we had originally recommended. And then after that, I really believe we would be, um, pleased to be able to support any of the other areas because I think they all could find, we could justify them on priority lists at the same level. You have safety and security, you, we have a teacher shortage where we're trying to provide more capacity and support so those mentor teachers, and that's not a huge amount. So I would say if you can squeeze that in there, that, that makes a lot of sense too. So I'm just trying to provide that to you, Mr. Braswell, and the rest of the board, because I would like you to be in a position tonight to come to a collective decision. Thanks.
Mr. Twigg?
Before I agree to table this motion until we learn and know more in August, I'd just like to put my two cents in here. The county could only afford two of the four SROs. And at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, I think we should obligate ourselves. If they provide due diligence, they'll ask us to provide two SROs to equal four. Uh, so I think that should not be overlooked as a priority. Uh, second, uh, and foremost, and certainly a whole lot more than an auditor, we have to put more money in our teachers' classrooms. Something that's been going on for a long time, been overlooked, and, uh, there's a tremendous need in this county for sure. So however, Dr. Baker's formula works out, I'd support that. But we have to invest into our classrooms to, to help our teachers with that cost, so whatever that costs. And then, uh, everything that's left over should be put into next year's Teacher and Staff Pay Raise Fund. That's, that's where I'd put all that, uh, money if, uh, we requisition it. Thank you.
All right, just before I make a comment, we, we don't employ SROs as a school board, those are employees of the Sheriff's Department. They are not employees of the schools.
However, you would, they would just not give us that two hundred and fifty thousand, they'd keep it and buy SROs. It's just a matter of semantics in the financial world.
The other thing is, we can't use carryover to fund recurring funds, that's not a legal budget process.
Then that would be a challenge to, uh, our discussion.
It's not a challenge, it's not legal.
Just to, just to remind the board, um, if you do choose to table, the, the challenge that you will have is that the August thirteenth board meeting, you could certainly come to a final decision at that time. However, um, I, I would say, I'm not sure what other time you would want to take because the very next day, you would need, it would need to be presented. So again, anything that we can do this evening to help, I think that's why we're bringing it to you this evening. So, uh, just go back to the, the funding that we need for the, that was based on the original budget, I think takes you to about, if, it could take you anywhere from five hundred and fifty thousand or at a minimum about three hundred and fifty thousand. And then I, I would just recommend that everyone chime in about what the priorities would be.
Dr. May?
I know we've been talking about considerations, and what I've worked out is, um, the hundred and twenty thousand for an auditor, sixty-five for the stipend of mentors, two hundred and fifty for the powerhouse software, addressing what was just discussed, three hundred thousand for school-based allocations. And then that brings it to seven thirty-five. The balance of the one, well, I think it's about one thirty-three would go for curriculum materials. And I, I'll leave, that's where I'm, uh, that would be my recommendation. I don't know if we're ready for a motion yet, but that's, that's when I'm ready to put on the floor, on the table.
And my revise is the one-time money, which is staying for materials of the two hundred and fifty thousand. The three thirty, which is a combination of the auditor and the SSOs. And then the remainder of two hundred and eighty would just be non-comp increases to our schools. And they could use it however they self-fit for materials. So that came to eight sixty. Ms. Shelley?
I'm still confused about the one-time money for the supervisors, the two hundred and fifty thousand one-time. Is that over and above the eight sixty? It is not. 'Cause I was thinking we got an additional eight hundred something from the state, but we also already got the two hundred and fifty from the supervisors. So is that like an equal, do we have about a million?
We are, well, I think, and I, and I want to apologize, I ask that that be included. The reason that I, and I know you're adding that math up, and we need to be careful 'cause the two hundred and fifty thousand, what we're doing is, we're saying we shift that from, uh, what is now at the top for two hundred and fifty of recurring, down to an item for one time. So it would not be part of your, in the, my way of thinking, the eight hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, unless, you know, you, um, unless you decided that that would be recurring funding of the eight sixty-eight and then you get, put the two fifty back into one time. But we're trying to build, as, as Ms. Flannard was saying, recurring funding for those two lines in particular. And the last one, I wanted to show to the board that that two hundred and fifty one-time could be put to really good use in lieu of going in areas where we would prefer recurring funding. But I do not believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Treier, that you need to add that two fifty, if you're okay with it being for the school supply store as one time, it, it is what we would understand, uh, to have originally been appropriated to us.
True.
Okay, so with that, well, I'm just wondering, since we do have that one-time two fifty, could the, the teacher-student supplies for Rover be part of that two fifty? One-time money, since that's the one-time startup. And then we still have the state funding, so we still have another eight hundred something, 'cause that's one time, unless we already had something else, we'd planned for that one time. But if that was the one time, and then we still have the state, the full funding of the state money to, um, for the, our menu here. So the Rover's paid, that's done, if we wanted to do that with our one-time money. And then we have all the other items that could come, so we actually have more money now. We have, we have the same amount of money, but we're taking, but we've already, but Rover's covered. So I'm looking at that. So I just, my, what I'm looking at, and I don't have the full eight, uh, eight hundred thousand, but, um, definitely the auditor, definitely the mentors. And, um, I know the power, the Power School is very important, and the recurring curriculum is very important. It's all very important. But I would start with making sure that we for sure have auditors, mentors, um, and Power School. Those are my, my choices to start. Doesn't, that doesn't come to the eight something.
Those three items would bring you up to four hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, so we still have, so I'm, I'm open to the other ones as well.
I think the fundamental question is, is, do we want to accept a grant that's coming from the state? That's really the question. Where this money goes is, is a, another thing. And I look at our responsibilities and ask myself, how do I determine what's best? And I always talk about, I'm in this school board to make decisions that are the best for our children. I'm not in the classroom, I don't have the insights that the people that are, in the audience this evening have. So in a way, it's a lot of guesswork from me, I can make some quick decisions, yes. But I think that we need to have from the administration, a formal proposal to say, here's eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, this is our recommendation, we think what we see here is the best for our children. And we can pass the amount of money that we're gonna get, and at the time, when decisions are, are made, we can look at this, I think, more precisely. You are the folks that are in the business, you're there every day, you know what the, what teachers are encountering in the classroom, why we need an internal auditor, or why we don't. We haven't used one for a long time, and my first say is, well, we're getting along without it, why, why bother? Aren't these other things more important? They may very well not be. I'm not suggesting that. So to sit here tonight frankly and say, well, I go for A, B, C, D, E, but I'm gonna drop out F, it's kind of shooting from the hip, as far as I'm concerned. So I hesitate to make a final decision other than the, the decision to say, yes, we will accept this money. We have enough of an opportunity to make decisions as we go, how we spend this money, because we're spending the money, not the county board. Ours, that's our responsibility.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Mr. Blaine, for your comments. I'm excited and delighted that we received the money as well. But at this particular point, uh, the course of action that have come up have been a hodgepodge of, of courses of action that truly haven't been war-gamed. And, nor have they not only been war-gamed, but we haven't even determined criteria to evaluate the courses of action. So, you know, at this particular point, um, I still am in the position where I would want to have this table to the next meeting, where we would have courses of action developed, weighed, where clearly defined evaluative criteria so we can make a good decision. I, I, this is an awful lot of money, to use Mr. Blaine's, um, comment, to shoot from the hip, and I agree with him. I think we need to, uh, take a step back, develop our courses of action, have clearly defined evaluative criteria, war-game them, and then offer us, uh, recommendations that we can consider. And if we, as a board at that point, decide to develop another course of action, uh, we can consider that here at this dais. But I think right now, uh, to get on a calculator or whatever and start adding up eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's not, uh, a, a good way for us to make that decision. So I, that's where I'm at right now. I, it's not personal, I just feel that way about it. I, I, I feel strongly about the decision-making process, and I just think we need to consider it in that way.
Well, Mr. Braswell, as Dr. Baker was pointing out, he, admin has war-gamed this. These are their options, and they want the board to own the decision, they don't want to influence our decision. So this is all they're gonna, willing to give us. So we need to talk about our priorities, if, so that we come to that conclusion. 'Cause he wants us as a school board, 'cause it's our job, to allocate the money without, they've been through, these are their priorities.
Yeah, I, I, I have no doubt that these are the priorities. But the priorities equal more than eight hundred thousand dollars. And so there has to be a choice for us to evaluate it. And I'm not trying to be combative, I'm just saying how I feel about it. And it's, I'm not gonna vote for something where the courses of action haven't been clearly defined, nor have the criteria been properly, uh, set forth so that we can make a sound decision. These are great priorities, I, 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 there's a mantra, I'm like a kid in a candy store, I don't know which one to pick. But we can't have them all. So I need to know, which ones do we feel, that you feel, uh, is most important? And tell us why you feel that way. And then if there's another s, course of action that this board would like to consider, then maybe we can entertain that at the point, at that point, just like we do with all other decisions that we make, by this, um, that, admin makes a recommendation to us. So that's where I'm at right now, it's not personal, I just feel that way. And, uh, I think, uh, I can empirically say why, or, or say why I feel that way.
Dr. Baker?
I, I just wanna, again, um, the idea of providing you with options rather than providing you with, um, recommendations that equaled exactly eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, interestingly enough, to Mr. Braswell's point, was about providing point, was about providing you, and I'll use your, your language, with viable courses of action. And I, and it's because I love you I can say this. I believe that if I had, or we had come and said, here's the course of action, you would have rightly suggested, why is this the only course of action that you have brought me or us that equals this amount? Why are we limited to these options and these amounts? And so I want to, again, say that the staff, in consultation with me, provided a lot of thought into these, and we actually narrowed it down significantly in terms of, it goes back to when you're developing a much larger scale budget, you have the needs, and then you have the, the funding, and you have to continue to whittle away. And we have done that, because there could be amounts larger in a number of these areas. But I will go back to, if we wait a month, or you wait a month, the only change would be you are directing us to go ahead and make the decision that we were wanting you to discuss tonight. And I apologize, because this is me, this is not the staff. We very well could have done the calculators and said, this is the amount. But it is the first time that I can recall, since I've been superintendent, that we've been in this type of enviable position to say, wow, we actually have a state budget that, that is sending us additional funding above and beyond what we expected or what was initially appropriated. So I do believe, even right now, we could make the numbers add up. But I do want you, because when the question comes up about whether or not it's going to be appropriated or not, I want you to feel as though you have been able to really have the discussion about what's important. If we hadn't had one of these items, and maybe even other items as part of the list or options, I'm quite certain that if not tonight, come August the 14th, someone's going to ask, why wasn't that in there? Or why wasn't that in there? So again, apologize to you, but, but I am keeping it real when it comes to why we did this.
And the love is reciprocal, Doc. However, I would have loved to have maybe three courses of action to consider that were properly weighed, and, and even though I will vote no, I still love you, man. I really do. All right.
Dr. Meyer, you are next.
I've just been toying with, with what's been commented so far. Each of us have shared our thoughts, and I was debating whether, you know, if we wait another month, and we've had a chance to think this over, and we ask, you know, Dr. Baker and his staff do come in with a recommendation, you know, then whether it would be something different than what we currently have, I don't know. I came prepared with, I made up my list, so I know what I'm, was recommending, or would put on the table for consideration. But if others are not ready to make a decision, then maybe we're not ready as a board to make a decision. And maybe we do need more time. And if the direction is that we ask that the superintendent and his staff take this and prepare, say, two options, and come back to us at the August meeting, even though it's going to be the day before we have to go down, but if that would help to, you know, delineate the courses and make it easier for a decision, I can stand by that. I can support that.
Dr. Baker's next.
A calendar question. We meet on the 14th, and when do we go to the county? The 15th the next day?
13th, the school board meets, and then the 14th, the next day.
Okay. Then we could either now come up with two options totaling four, five, 600,000, things that we know that we could get a majority vote on, and then either decide on the last three, or wait till after the county tells us what they have to tell us and deal with it in September. There's your thought. Thank you.
I, I would say, one, I, but, but I do think, again, I'm sorry for inserting my opinion, but I appreciate that I think that Mr. Twig has, again, hit an option that would help us. If there are items that uniformly the board or majority could say, we definitely want these items to be in the final, and the amounts can be what the board ultimately approves on the 13th, that would be a tremendous help. So when we go back to the number of options of the, and I'll say six items, if we go ahead and remove that the 250 is the one-time money, but, money, but you have six items. If you said, these are the three that we want you to come with, or the four that we want you to come with, that would certainly be helpful to have that input. If you cannot come to that decision, then we will go ahead and come to a recommendation. But it would probably be for us, one option.
You had Dr. Meyer's recommendation earlier, and I just listened further, and this was my recommendation, 250 for the Rover material, one-time startup funds that Ms. Shelley was talking that didn't go into the 868,000. The 120,000 for the auditor, the 210,000 for the SSOs, the 65 for the mentors, the 250 for the software, and that remains 223,000, which could go to increase the non-comp to be divided among the schools that we have cut for the past three years to make ends meet. So if we can get non-comp up, that takes care of the materials. If that's where the schools decide to put it, that just goes back to where we've been cutting over the years. And that is 868.
Madam Chair, would, would you take your items one by one and let the board vote on each item, and then see if it has sufficient coverage?
Sure.
I mean, that's an option.
As a caveat to that, let's see if we can find something that we could all agree on, something like the teacher classroom fund Rover piece.
That's one-time money, yes.
Understand, but doesn't matter.
Yes.
He suggested we just go one at a time. So this isn't an official vote. This is just a priority vote.
Check.
So does everyone agree that the 250,000 one-time money we could use for the Rover startup fund? Shelley, yes. Meyer, yes. Phelps, you're shaking your head.
I mean, I think all of them.
But we're not voting to do it. We're just, we agree that we could use that there, and then that gives staff a place to start.
We could use all of them.
Okay, then.
Okay, so, Mr. Twig.
I'm good.
I mean, we're just getting it, like consensus. Mr. Braswell, we're not voting right now. We're trying to help staff so we can. Mr. Blaine? Do you agree that the one-time money could be used for the Rover startup?
Yeah, I'm looking for the number here.
It's one-time at 250,000.
Number six.
Number six. It's on this page. So that's one of the things. The next position was the auditor. Is that a priority for Ms. Shelley? Mr. Meyer, Dr. Meyer, Mrs. Phelps?
No.
Not a priority for you?
It's supposed to be priority officers.
But we're on auditor right now. This, we're, we're going one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, good for Ms. Phelps. Mr. Braswell? No. Mr. Twig?
No.
No. Mr. Blaine?
No.
No. And yes. The security officers, Ms. Shelley?
I'm, I'm very on that one, so I can say yes.
Mr. Dr. Meyer? Sorry.
No.
Ms. Phelps?
I was.
Mr. Braswell?
No.
Mr. Twig?
Yes, but I wish they'd carry a gun and.
Those would be SRs, and they cannot be employed by us. Mr. Blaine?
So yes.
No for him, and yes, obviously, for me. The mentors, Ms. Shelley?
Yes.
Dr. Meyer, yes. Mrs. Phelps?
No.
Mr. Braswell?
I think yes.
Mr. Twig?
No.
Mr. Blaine?
I guess we say yes.
The software, Ms. Shelley?
Our school, yes.
Yes.
Dr. Meyer? Ms. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Braswell? Mr. Twig?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
What item wants that?
This is the, number one, number, number one, the software.
Yes.
Okay, and I don't, I'm going down my list, so my last one was the increasing the non-comp funds to the schools, which could be used for materials if the schools decide, but it just goes into what we've had before. So, Ms. Shelley?
Okay, because we've got recurring curriculum and school-based allocations both on here, so.
I think it's okay if you just start with the school-based allocations.
School-based allocations are a good place to start, Dr. Baker says.
I'm good with that.
Dr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Phelps?
Down.
Mr. Braswell?
Yep.
Mr. Twig?
Oh, I'll hold on that one. No.
Mr. Blaine?
Oh, yeah, I'll say yes.
And me. So, Dr. Meyer, what's left?
Can I just, I, I just want, I'm sorry.
I think we're.
I just want to make sure that everyone is clear, that the last one was about providing more school-based allocations, and, and I want to make sure everyone understood, because Mr. Twig, we listened to everyone's feedback, and your feedback was that you wanted more, more in the schools for classrooms. And that's a lot of what the school-based allocations, and I, that may not have been understood. So I just wanted to make sure, because a lot was coming by you all very quickly, and I want to make sure.
I got you.
Would that, would that be a yes or no, or still a no? I just wanted to make sure.
The non-comp that's been cut over the years is what pays for those materials.
Right. At Dr. Baker's explanation, I'll change to yes.
That's what I thought. I was, I was like, I thought that. Do you want? Do you want the auditor games? I was wondering as well if I could explain the mentors as well, and why I said yes for the mentors, because that has not come up at all. And so what, the reason for the mentors is, all of our teachers, there are, as a first-year teacher, get a mentor in their building, which is someone who, a, a current teacher, and they support them their first year in. It helps with retention. It helps with maintaining the teacher, knowing what, what is happening in the schools, because they're learning how to teach even better because of the mentor. But after the first year, that mentor is gone. So some people might have perfectly learned everything their first year. They may not have learned everything perfectly their first year. So the mentor would just be a second year coming around for the second year that the teacher is working in the building. And this is for new teachers. So you have to think about it. This is 23, 24-year-old, new people coming in to teach for the first time. It's not going to be someone who is transferring in, who's been teaching 20 years in another division that comes to us. It's a brand-new teacher. So that's what this is, to support our new teachers, so that they're, after their first year, they're just not dropped, okay, do everything on your own now. They have the support from a, a veteran teacher.
That is 55, 65, 85. It's very important.
Madam Chair, with, each one has given their opinion on the different items.
I think we have a motion almost.
Can you then not share that with Dr. Baker, and he and his staff can then come back, given what we've shared individually?
Yeah, we definitely covered everything.
Know the items that are consistently across the board, and those that are the variables? Because sometimes with the, like for myself, with items two and three, you know, between the school-based allocations and additional funding for reoccurring curriculum materials, you know, those are open-door kind of things that help to support what's occurring in the classroom. And I think if Dr. Baker is satisfied with the discussion, then, that we've had and, and shared, then some, then a recommendation could then come forward.
Yes. The only thing that I want to make sure of before the board votes to potentially table a, a final vote, that we have the direction to go ahead and form the recommendation for the August 13th meeting, I want to make sure, Mr. Treier, does the process need to go through the Audit and Finance Committee through the county, though, prior to August 13th? And if that is the case?
Yes, we can't do it late.
We would have to, we would have to form it this evening. And I just, and I apologize for thinking of that. Otherwise, we would have to delay it into September.
Yes, true.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So is it, for, again, for the board who has all contributed, it sounded to me like there was, on all of the items, with the exception of recurring curriculum materials, that there was a majority of folks on the board that were in favor of one, three, which is the Power School software, three being the school-based allocations, of some amount, not necessarily 300,000. Stipends for the new teachers, mentors, the school security officers, and the internal auditor, and then the one-time classroom materials and supplies, I think, as it is presented, was, was agreed upon. Have I misunderstood what we heard from either the board or Mr. Treier and Ms. Flannard?
That's what I have as well.
Okay. Then I know that this is the calculator situation.
Can I just make a motion?
That Mr. Braswell did not like. So I don't, I'm just saying, I think that we can form the amounts, and if Mr. Treier could read back what would add up to the 868, so that the board could make a motion.
Okay, I'm showing the auditor, $120,000. Looking at the school security officers, $210,000. Teacher-mentor, $65,000. Power School software, $250,000. And if you were to use 223, 877 for your non-comp, school-based allocations, that would bring you to 868,877.
And that also takes the 250 one-time money for Rover.
That's correct.
I'm going to make a motion.
I'll make that motion to, reiterating what Mr. Treier had said, the 120 for the auditor, 210 for the SSO, 65 for the teacher-mentor, 250 for powerhouse.
Power school.
Power school. I keep saying house. Power school. And 223, 877 for non-comp, non-comp, school-based allocations, which totals 866, 877, with the understanding that 250,000 would, would be the one-time use money for Rover.
That's correct.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
And I understand, we're kind of in a catch-22. You know, I was moving toward delaying a decision until August, but if, if staff is going to have to have a decision by the board to take to the Finance Committee in preparation for the meeting in August, so that when we meet with the Board of Supervisors, we can elaborate and, and explain our position. And the only way that something can be discussed by them is if we, as a board, make a recommendation, a request. If we make no requests, then there's nothing on the table for them to even talk about. So I think we have to, as a board, make a request, and for that reason, I made the motion.
Mr. Braswell?
Again, I, I think.
Was that seconded?
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is, is that, again, this is not a way to war-game these, these courses of I don't know why we have an artificial deadline in August. And it has to be made in August. That hasn't been clarified. Why is it that we can't make this decision in September? Why do we have to rush into making a decision that we're not even, we haven't evaluated properly? I, that's where I'm at right now. So unless somebody can tell me something that can satisfy that. right now, so, um, unless somebody can tell me something that, uh, can satisfy that, uh, unwartiness with me, then my, my vote's still no.
Um, I.
Dr. Baker?
I will try, uh, the, you know, we are starting on, uh, school on that very August thirteenth, part of these recommendations are to be able to start up for the, as close to the beginning of the school year as possible, any delay, uh, those resources are not there, so, again, the sooner we can do it, the better in terms of, uh, getting them appropriated and getting them spent in the way that we need to have them spent, the other thing is that we had, I think, a meeting that would have happened in the month of June, but was postponed in terms of a joint session with the Board of Supervisors, so you are going to have a work session on the fourteenth, and so to be able to, at that time, um, maximize the time together to have it appropriated, I think that's why we're working with that August deadline, if none of that is important to the board, then you can delay it as long as you want, um, I'm saying we would like to have that, and, and the reason, again, I apologize to the board for providing open options, rather than having said, this is exactly what we want, but I do believe that, what I've heard in terms of feedback from the board, has been helpful, uh, to me and, and to the staff, so, again, if there, it wasn't for the audit and finance process, I think you could hold off on a final recommendation, but if you don't make a, a decision tonight, then we will need to wait until September, uh, or at least late August, I would think, before we would present, so it's still up to the board if you want to do that.
I think because some of these items, well, I mean, the Power School, for instance, the teachers are going to be able to start using that from the day one, um, the mentors, if we're going to have mentors, then, um, they are, we've got second-year teachers starting on August third, or whatever the day is, um, we've got, um, the school-based allocations that they can start putting them into the departments, um, each of the department's funds, so I think these are some items that, the earlier we get it approved, the better it is so that these funds will be able to be approved by the supervisors, and then our schools will be able to use these funds, versus waiting until September.
Mrs. Phelps?
I, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here, and, uh, and I, I went through my priority list, and my priorities was the school securities, and, uh, security officers, SROs, whatever have you, and, um, I feel that it's moving too fast, and I feel that it, it, it's laid out there, and, um, the administration and Dr. Baker, you have our ideas, our, our, um, what our concerns are, one through seven, and, you know, we can all kind of get it all together, and be able to defend, as a school board and a unit, together that we have it in writing, down where we can go to the Board of Supervisors, because, um, for me, I don't even know exactly, uh, the, the Board of Supervisors, are they going to appropriate this exact money, you know, every, it's a question for me right now, and, and so I sit here for Lisa Phelps and the community, and say, you know what, I, I, I'm not going to make this decision right now, I think, come back, like Mr. Braswell had said, you know, um, he had a great point there, and whether it's in August, you know, to come right now to make a decision for eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars of taxpayer monies right now, for me, I, I can't support, so, that's my, uh, that's just for my two cents.
Dr. Meyer?
A, a point of clarification, the reason that we're in this situation is, one, if we make no request, the supervisors have nothing to act on, because nothing's been decided, if the board takes no action, then there is nothing to talk about, other than new state money coming, but we have no, nothing to say, this is what we want to do, that the board has acted on, each of us individually has voiced their opinion, but the board has taken no action, the second, uh, that these are taxpayer funds, these are state funds coming to the school division for the school board to say how the school board wants to use these funds, again, if we take no action, we can't explain we as, how we as a board want to do, and what we want to do with it.
Yeah, just to be clear on that, it's state funds coming to the schools from the state, so.
Um, do.
But we can call the question.
State taxes, I, I'm, I'm just, okay, I got you, I understand.
Um, do we need to table this because of this conversation right now?
No, we have a motion on the floor, right?
Do we change the motion?
Motion is to approve what Dr. Baker asked Mr. Treyer to present as a recommendation from the administration, and we have a second. So, any more discussion, Ms. Shelley? No more discussion, so, we'll call the question.
Do you want to do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, no.
Braswell, no.
Twig, aye, yes.
Blaine, aye.
Grant, aye, motion carries five to two. Moving on to fourteen point zero-two, approval of the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty instructional calendar.
Mr. Brown?
Good evening.
Madam Chair, board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Myr-, Dr. Martin, it is my privilege to bring to you tonight, uh, the proposed nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty instructional calendar, um, it is, uh, it was a wonderful journey, it was a wonderful experience, and we're going to kind of run you sort of quickly through that right now. So if you see, uh, our calendar committee this year was made up of thirty-five members, two of which are sitting in front of me right now, Ms. Phelps and Dr. Meyer, uh, we had, um, an elementary, a middle, a high school principal, we had five central office, um, employees, there were ten parents representing all levels and all of the five feeder patterns, and there were fifteen teachers representing all the levels and all the five feeder patterns as well, I would like to take this opportunity to thank those thirty-five people, because it was a, a pretty big dedication of time, um, some of our meetings were, ran fairly quickly, others went a little longer, as we got into some discussion and some, um, consensus gathering, uh, but, uh, they really were very dedicated. We met three times, starting, uh, April the twenty-fourth, uh, we, the first meeting that we had, we gathered previously collected data from the committee, so we really looked at the calendar that was approved, so the calendar that we're about to, to, to step into, and we looked at that data and that collection, uh, we looked at the survey data, we looked at, um, snow days, we looked at inclement weather days, we gathered feedback from the committee based upon the calendar that, that, this upcoming calendar that has already been approved by the, by the board, um, and then we collected questions from the committee, there were some really interesting questions that came up, um, so the next meeting we came, when we came back, we, uh, presented a summary of this feedback from the committee, uh, we also presented the findings from the questions that were presented by the committee, so questions that they had, um, about all sorts of things, we also gathered feedback from other advisory groups, we, um, gathered feedback from the Teacher Advisory Board, um, also Dr. Baker's PTO Advisory Board, while there were only about ten members present for that PTO, uh, Advisory Board, uh, still a lot of great ideas came out, came out of that, um, that sort of idea mining, we then got back together May twenty-ninth, where we looked at a draft calendar, um, that was created with the feedback in mind, um, and all the data collection, and we went through a, a fairly lengthy consensus meeting, where we, um, hashed out all the different concerns and, and, and all the different ideas, and came to what we're going to, um, look at in just a second. Some of the calendar topics that came up, um, first of which is Virginia Code twenty-two point one, and just to kind of keep you up to date, twenty-two point one is the code that actually states that each local school board shall set the school calendar so that the first day is required, um, after Labor Day, and there are four options for, um, looking for waivers for that, the first is the school has been closed an average of eight days, which we have over the last five years, also, the school board, um, another way to kind of get a waiver around that is that the school board, or the school division, has to provide an instructional program, um, that is dependent upon one of those, uh, dependent upon school districts around you, that also, um, are applying for the waiver, another way is that a school district, uh, may apply for the waiver if they are offering an experimental program that is dependent upon the time of year in which they apply, uh, they also can apply for the waiver if all the districts around them are approved for the waiver, a school district can as well, a couple of years ago, they, um, brought an Appropriation Act in, item one-thirty-six A point one-eight, which actually, to help school districts maintain some consistency, if a school district was approved in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year, to begin before Labor Day, they are automatically approved thereafter, and that has been extended as well through, um, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and I believe twenty-twenty-one, so, um, that act has, has been extended, I'm sorry, eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty. So we also looked at, uh, previously collected calendar data, which, when we looked at this, um, in the April meeting, uh, this was the survey data that was performed by the calendar committee, uh, that created the original early, um, the original idea of ending that semester at winter break, um, and so that survey was done the previous school year, and so we spent a lot of time looking at that, talking about that, that survey, we also looked at performance data, uh, we looked at graduation dates, and whether those dates would conflict with, um, with our earlier, with our earlier ending, whether those dates were going to conflict with, um, other school divisions, or universities, or colleges, uh, we looked at the strengths and the limitations that, that the new design of the calendar was going to present. So, the proposed nineteen-twenty instructional calendar key alterations, one of the big things that came up over and over and over from, um, from the instructional department, from teachers, was the loss of professional learning that occurs when, um, inclement weather comes, and we begin to lose that, uh, we had a lot of discussions about, you know, how do we keep our teachers really at the, at, at the razor's edge of, of, of highly effective instructional practices, and that's by providing them the training and the preparation that they need, um, so we've added, the nineteen-twenty proposed calendar is adding additional, uh, professional learning days to the beginning of the school year, also protecting those professional learning days that we have later in the school year, so that they're not used up, um, when, when the snow arrives and inclement weather, we also look to shift spring break, um, earlier, so, looking to shift spring break to the end of the third nine weeks, providing an extended weekend around the Easter holiday, so the Friday and the Monday of Easter holiday would be an extended weekend, and looking to standardize some of the time that all of our instructional levels needed, to really look at performance data, especially at that mid-semester timeframe. So, as I bring this short presentation to a close, uh, hopefully you've had time, um, to, to review the calendar, I know Ms. Phelps and, and Dr. Meyer have, um, so, as I bring this, um, this presentation to a close, uh, the administration proposes, um, that the school board approve the draft two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty instructional calendar, I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Need a motion first, obviously.
I'll make a motion to approve the nineteen-twenty instructional calendar.
Okay, Ms. Shelley?
Second.
Second by Mr. Braswell, now for discussion, Mr. Twig, you had your hand up.
When, please, graduation?
Well, looking at this coming year, we have, um.
Yes.
This coming year, so the, the currently approved school board calendar, uh, the graduations are, they fall mid-week of that little final week of school.
Which is like the twenty-second.
Yeah, the twenty-second, uh, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
It's on the bottom, where it says graduation.
Very bottom, yeah, those are the proposed graduations, so May nineteenth, twenty, and twenty-one.
There you go, okay, also, uh, uh, surveys.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what has your committee at large been saying about surveys, uh, for past, present, and near future?
Well, the calendar committee itself had its job to create a future calendar, and so the committee itself, um, felt that the survey information that was gathered, um, in the previous school year, uh, that was performed, where over four thousand, um, four thousand community members replied, felt like that was a good, a good starting point for this, so as we go further, then that's definitely, um, an idea that the next calendar committee might have to resurvey, or, or, or to look at making those decisions based on that.
I, for one, and I hope the board supports, uh, what I'm about to say, urge you to next, uh, May, before school gets out, get all parents to do a survey, they'll have been in this one year, they're looking at another similar calendar year.
Good point.
Uh, uh, so I urge you to consider that on your own, but, uh, your administration would have to dictate that to you, now, uh, uh, this, this, is the Easter break a variation from this present upcoming year from this one, uh, or are they pretty much similar?
Yes, sir, the, the approved calendar that we're about to come into, um, has our spring break, uh, later.
Like one, two weeks, and does it, but it doesn't affect SOEs, though, does it?
Uh, it's, it's very close, which is why.
Close, but no.
When we, when, when we created the eight, the nineteen-twenty, that was one of the overwhelming opinions from, from all groups that we surveyed, parents, um, you know, everyone, that they wanted to see that spring break moved earlier in the year, and so we placed it at the end of the third nine weeks.
Right.
As a nice sort of, um, set time to, to, to offer spring break.
So, everything else is pretty much relative, two weeks of Christmas?
Yes, sir.
And get off earlier in the month?
Yes, sir.
Great, and then, uh, what's your intent to request or commit as a committee for a third, uh, attempt at this new calendar?
Well, as of right now, um, I'm not sure if, and I'm going to look back at Ms. Flannard, if I am going to be leading the next committee, but as soon as I.
What's been the word, what's it, what are people saying about it?
Well, I mean, typically, typically in the past, the county has approved two cali-, two calendar years at a time, um, because of the short timeframe, um, and because of the changes that our, that our county and our community has gone through with this past one, the calendar committee felt like approving one, so then we could live in this early, in this, you know, change that we did, for a couple of years before we make decisions to move on.
Okay, and then, uh, uh, waiver status, we cleared?
We are, yes, sir, very much so.
Officially, as of when?
Uh, we are until.
No, when did, when did we get clearance to operate?
Uh, we have it.
When did we achieve it?
Um.
A week ago, six weeks ago?
We actually, um, just submitted the SOQ document that states we are using, we have two, we actually, um, meet the requirement two different ways, one is based on weather, and the other is the Appropriation Act that Mr. Brown referenced in the state statute, so, um, we chose the, uh, because we opened early in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, but technically, we, um, qualify two different ways, so we have already submitted that paperwork.
Check, thank you very much for that info, and lastly, just a, a comment, uh, every teacher I've spoken with, which is numerous, uh, has said that, uh, they want to keep this calendar for the foreseeable future, they, in other words, it's not what it says, it's, I do not want change.
Right.
So please take that back to your calendar committee the next time you meet, and, and at least, uh, from perception of some, uh, please keep it the same, give it a chance for two, three, well, not three or four years, excuse me, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
One question, first nine weeks, forty-four days.
Mm-hmm.
Was it supposed to be forty-five days, or is that because the holidays in there?
It's because the holidays in there.
Oh, okay. So, then it would be qualified, the 45-day, I saw 44 and I went, oh, I thought it was 45, but that makes sense.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I just have a cautionary note.
Yes, ma'am.
Purely approving the calendar, like the calendar, and one of the part of the calendar that people like about it is that the first eight days are not made up. That only scares me because there's not a lot of days after that.
Right.
And I've lived here an awful long time and had numerous years when I was in school to where we magically had to have days added on to the end of this year, school year, and that makes people really grumpy. So, I just wanted to say, fantastic. I'm sure, I mean, we're not, probably not going to change it, but it just scares me a little bit. Yes, Ms. Shelley?
One more thing, one thing that, so, our staff members are going to go back an extra two days early, earlier, like not usually, it's one week. So, it's one week plus two days. So, what I see is because of the, the days around Easter, and that's where they're making up for those two days-
Yes, ma'am.
Of extra, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for bringing that up. I just noticed. So, the teachers, the staff will come back on, in 19, on August 1st?
Started packing up already. Yes. Yes, they'll return August the 1st for professional learning. And then, what that'll enable us to do is allow for that entire work week, which typically is interrupted with some professional learning. Teachers will have the opportunity to be in their classroom, to prepare for students, to have really the time to look through cumulative records, to meet with their professional learning teams, to really, truly be fully prepared for students' arrival.
What are they coming back this year? Are they coming back-
They're coming back just the week.
Seven days, or?
It's just five days prior to students' arrival.
So, we're adding two more on the front end-
We're adding two more to that, yes.
For professional learn-
Yes, ma'am.
And so, the teachers know this, right?
They do now.
All right.
And then, they're getting back, they're getting back the two days for-
And then, they, yeah, their contract's not extended because they receive those days off later on in the year.
Right, you're front-loading now. You're front-loading at the professional development. Well, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Brown, for spearheading the calendar effort. I know it was hard to make a lot of people happy. And I'm going to look forward to the results and the collection of the data and the analysis along with your survey, hopefully-
Yes, ma'am.
From the parents and stakeholders and the input. And I guess we have some data to go off of for two years-
Right.
On the out-years to see testing and air conditioning in buses and, you know, the utilities expenses and-
Right. We'll learn a lot this year.
Therefore, yes. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Any more questions? All those in favor of approving the 2019-2020 instructional calendar as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thanks for a nice job of presentation.
On to 14.03, the second reading approval of policy IGAA grading systems. Ms. Flannard?
Thank you. Grading and reporting systems vary depending on the age and the grade of a student. This update to policy IGAA reflects a change in the elementary grading scale for grades three through five and changes that more clearly reflect the grading system that is currently used in grades six through 12. And it's the administration's recommendation that the school board approve the second reading for policy IGAA grading systems as presented.
I will move the recommended action.
Mr. Blaine moves to approve second reading of policy IGAA. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Flannard. On to 14.04, first reading approval of policy IKFD, alternative paths to attaining standard units of credit. Mr. Mitchell?
Thanks. Good evening, board members. Madam Chair, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. I would like to present for first reading, policy IKFD, which establishes alternative pathways for earning high school credit apart from the standard 140-hour class setting. This policy sets guidelines for creative learning opportunities that go beyond the traditional classroom, and I'll do my best to answer any questions you have.
I'll move the recommended action.
Motion by Mr. Blaine to approve the first reading of policy IKFD, alternative paths to attaining standard units of credit. Second by Mr. Twig. Any discussion?
Can we ask him questions?
That's discussion, yes, sir. Mr. Blaine?
How do students learn about the opportunity to volunteer for this?
Well, we'll need to essentially make sure that if the board approves this policy, then we will need to move forward with making our staff aware that this provides new opportunities for flexibility for students earning credit in alternative ways. You know, Dr. Meyer, you asked, I guess, last month about a little bit of profile of a Virginia graduate, and this really dovetails well with that as far as allowing us to have students who are in internships or in externships to maybe learn in alternative ways. So, we'll need to essentially have a framework and a policy in place and then begin educating our staff on how to share that information with students.
It looks like a tool, to me, that would work for higher achieving kids as well as special needs boys and girls at the same time. We have, gives us a lot of flexibility.
And we hope that to be the case.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the first reading of policy IKFD?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
We will move on to item 15.01, board member comments. Start with Ms. Shelley. Do you have a comment?
I just hope everyone is enjoying their summer. I know our school people, people in the schools or administrators are working hard, get some break, take some breaks, and I know summer school is running smoothly. So, just enjoy your summer. It's short. That's all.
Dr. Meyer?
No comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Phelps?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to, to say congratulations to the Spotsy Knights baseball team again, and the Cortland soccer team. It makes me feel proud. I know what sports does for, for my kids, and, and it really does. And I love baseball, so I'm just very happy about that. And also, on another note, on June 28th, the Spotsylvania County School Board of Supervisors appointed me to be the, the school representative on the Transportation Committee. And I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for having their vote of confidence in me to work with me and hopefully keep up the positive working relationship and all come together. And so, that's it. Happy summer, everybody, and we'll see you soon.
Mr. Braswell?
Just a couple of quick things. I personally believe this bullying thing to be real. I think the magnitude of the incidents and the number of incidents by which I personally have been exposed has really, along with some poor decisions we've been making, is cause for us to not treat this issue lightly. And further, it's convinced me that I, we have to face this thing not only head-on, but differently than we have and in addition to what we're already doing that's working. So, it's a big, broad point of resolution that, in my opinion, has to change or work hard. We have to work harder toward getting a better solution. Let's see. So, we have to provide more, better due diligence toward that issue, just as a comment and a perspective from one board member. Also, we had a, the Fourth of July Festival for the county was the Saturday before the Fourth. We ran another school booth right beside the dunking booth for our, I think it was a support services group, and had a number of respondents or, you know, parents and children coming up and enjoyed talking to them. I'd like to think and hope that we can continue that with more board member support, but also more administrative support in the future because it's enjoyable to have a face out there and to communicate with the few that we do and those that we don't communicate with. We've got a big fat sign out there that says who we are and why we're here, which is very good communication. And lastly, and once again, congratulations to our Spotsylvania High School and our Livingston District for our accomplishment in representing this great county school system in achieving a first in a long time and the first in forever at the high school, our baseball championship. So, congratulations to our team and our school there. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blaine?
It was, and it is, every year, it's a privilege to attend graduations, and we attended all of them this year. And following that experience, talking to parents throughout the division, I've had more parents take time to tell me how pleased they have been with the instruction, the leadership, and the guidance, and the whole range of things that we do for their boys and girls. I couldn't have, I really felt very proud that here I was getting, to hear of all these very terrific, outstanding accomplishments. And you are the folks and the folks with whom you work that need to know how much they are being appreciated in this community. We hear, we have problems. I don't know of anybody that doesn't. We're working at them, but you all deserve a thank you for this year just completed, and my best wishes as we embark on this new year. It's going to be another terrific year for our division.
I have a couple of things. First thing, I just wanted to apologize for missing the last meeting, being the only second meeting that I missed in five years. We, first one, I had pneumonia, and this time I had, had a very medical emergency for one of my animals. So, apologize for not being here. And as far as the comments from the board this evening on the bullying topic, I think as a division, we realize that it's an ongoing problem. As a board, we all are very aware that we are striving to address it. I think through the budget, we made it a priority to address mental health issues and address staffing issues in the schools. I can help to treat this, but I think that if we all, as a board, keep focusing on this, we can always make better efforts. As adults, we are examples. So, I think we have to start, if we're going to be a proponent against child bullying, we have to look and see about how we behave ourselves as well. So, I think that we need to make sure that we are behaving in appropriate manner to start with as bro models. As far as specific problems that were brought up in the board member comments, I just encourage, if you have a specific issue that we need to address, I think that when administration reaches out to you to schedule meetings and bring your problems forward, I encourage you to do it. Administration can only help you if you come in and sit down with members of the staff and we can address those issues. I think, lastly, everything that we are doing as a board sometimes is, the results are not immediately seen. So, I think that we need to keep focused then and find ways to continue to strive for excellence, but also recognize our accomplishments as they come along because sometimes they take time to have an impact on our schools. And that brings us to item 16.01, unfinished business. Does anybody have any unfinished business? Mr. Braswell?
First of all, Mr. Twig, I don't want to rain on your parade, but Cortland baseball has won a state championship. We want to make sure we, we have that down.
And two, correct?
Yeah. We just want to make sure we get it out.
Two championships.
We want to make sure that we get it out there. And the other question I had is, is graduation, summer school graduation, when is it going to be? And where is it going to be?
July 19th.
July 19th.
July 19th, 6:30, Chancellor High School.
6:30. Thank you.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Any other unfinished business? Move on to 16.02, new business. Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just recently completed a compensation study, as it was referred to as the Evergreen Study, and we found that significant adjustments have been made in compensation as a result of it. This year, we approved somewhere around a 7% increase in stipends just to bring us back to pre-recession levels. In terms of stipends, we're still a decade behind. And as we look into the next budget year, we need to ensure that we have competitive stipends, not just athletic, but all stipends. And I would ask this board to give guidance to administration to product or conduct a stipend study that we could have available around the December timeframe as we enter into the next budget year so that we can do a comparison of our stipends that we pay our athletic coaches and, and other academic coaches in comparison to counties in the surrounding area that are similar in size. The reason why I mention this is a teacher left, one of, left Cortland High School because pay was about equal with staff, but there was a significant difference in the stipend amount which made the difference. And so, I just think we need to, it's time to have a relook at our stipends and how we pay for supervision. Indoor track, we pay for two positions, and they supervise a lot of children. And we had a situation a couple of years back when supervision was not in place in the proper way, and we, you know, and we paid a heavy price for it. And so, I just think as a preventative measure, we need to look at our stipends to ensure that it's, that we're not being penny wise and pound foolish. So, I would like to see a stipend study so that we're paying our coaches and athletic teams and academic endeavors competitively with neighboring counties, but also that we're doing it in a way where we can encourage in-house or teachers to participate and do it in a way where we have supervision of our students at all times. So, that would be my request to this board, that we ask administration to consider that so as we enter into the budget season that we'd have fresh data that we can work with.
Any other new business? Any other new business? Okay, that brings us to adjournment, we have motion to adjourn?
Is, is, is that, Dr. Baker, is that something that we could do? Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.